Superintendent has advised that we have two presentations this evening under his portion of superintendent's reports. We have both an MCAS report and a K through 12 inside program report. And we advise that we should take those matters out of order so that we could begin the program and have those presentations move accordingly. So, is it Ms. Casabian, Assistant Superintendent, is providing an update on the MCAS report, item 4.4 on your agenda?
And we have our directors for any questions right out there.
Ms. Casabian, if need be, you can take that microphone out of the stand and move around if you have to do that.
You know me well. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Superintendent DeRoucy, members of the school committee, and the general public. I want to thank you very much. What we have prepared, and when I say "we," we've done an overview of the district results. It doesn't have a lot of figures in there, but this is an overview of our MCAS results of 2011. And this was done in collaboration with Dr. Margaret Adams, the Director of Literacy, Title I in English Language Learners, who's here with us this evening. Mara Johnson, who is the Administrator of People Personnel Services. And Dr. Jane Skelton, who is the Director of English Language Arts. And we have also with us Assistant Director Janice Raymond, who works with Dr. Adams as well. So what we decided to do is do a district overview, meaning some general trends that happened. Well, the clicker's not working. Janice? Sorry, folks. It is a district overview, and we're looking at trends that happened. Thank you very much. We're looking at trends that happened in the district in the areas of English Language Arts, English, Literacy, Math. And our Director of Math and Data Analysis, Marion Finn, regret she couldn't be with us this evening. And Special Education. So if we can go to the next slide, please. You do understand that we have so many issues going on with our assessment system and so many things to address. And we look at the growth, we look at the challenges, we're looking at the overview. And most of all, as I always say, behind every number, every score, every result, there is a student. There is a face. And we have to remember that all the time when we look at trajectories, when we look at growth charts, when we look at percentiles. It is our students that matter. Obviously, most of that to us, it's student achievement and student growth. The very first thing, it's a separate piece of paper I gave to the school committee. I've given them a website, which is the website for the DART, the D-A-R-T, which is the District Analysis and Review Tool. Now, this is a wonderful tool for you to be able to go to, and it does track pertinent data elements over time. It makes comparisons to districts like Malden. And I think that's very important to remember. When you look at districts like Malden comparatively, demographically, socio-economically, linguistically, that's an important comparison to make. It gives us a snapshot of the trends and the pieces of data, and we find some comparisons between the districts. So if I refer to the DART, that is what it's all about. Also, this is a little primer going along when we talk about MCAS and we talk about our assessment system and results. When we talk about LEP, it's Limited English Proficient Students. Those are our students in our Sheltered English Immersion classes. Those are our students who come to us with little or no English and are in our program for a number of years until they're exited. As you know, our program is at the Salemwood School for SCI, but all our schools have English Language Learner classes with ELL teachers as well, ESL teachers. It's the acronyms that I just wanted to refer to. If you are an FLEP, or FLAP as it's called, those are the students with Little English Proficient who have exited the program. And these students have a two-year status of formerly, former Limited English Proficient. If we refer to something as FLNE, these are students that come to us whose first language is not English. And always we hear about AYP, which is Adequate Yearly Progress. This is something that's designated by the child left behind. And I'm going to talk to you about additionally, you'll hear some ratings called CPI. This is the Composite Proficiency Index. This means that every time a child takes a test, they get a score. And this score is rated, obviously, Advanced, Proficient, needs improvement or Warning. To each of those ratings, there is a number. Advanced is 100, Proficient can go from 75 to 50, improvement, again, a little lower, and Warning, 0 to 25. The average of all the scores is our Composite Proficiency Index for the District of Malden. Now, the state has a CPI as well, and the trajectory says that we'd like to be 100 percent, in other words, all students reaching 100 percent by 2014. The difference between the state trajectory, I believe this year's trajectory was around 92, and the difference between the state trajectory and our CPI is what we call the achievement gap, the gap between those two numbers. So that's something to remember. And another thing we will refer to this evening are the Common Core standards. We are a Race to the Top district. And the Common Core standards now, as you well know, we have Massachusetts Frameworks. And the Common Core standards are those standards now nationally adopted by Race to the Top grant funding and a Race to the Top commitment that we now integrate the Common Core standards into our standards. These are national standards. You will hear Common Core curriculum, you will hear Common Core graduation requirements, and this has all come about with Race to the Top funding. So let's talk a little bit about the demographic changes in Malden. This is a little background going on. We have an increase in the number of our Limited English Proficient students from 9.4 percent in 2004 to 16 percent this current year. And that's a big increase. We have a decrease, a slight decrease, in Special Education students. And we also have an increase in the number of students with severe disabilities. You can see on the chart following, Mr. Duffin, thank you. You can see on the chart some of the statistics from 2004 to '05 to the present day. You see a couple of blanks because those blanks are determined by the October 1st report, from which I haven't received the results. But you can see what's happening with some of our statistics. Definitely the 9.2 to 16 percent, a slight increase in sped, a slight decrease in sped, excuse me, and also an increase for the past seven years in the first language, which is not English at home. Our economic index has also increased over the past four years. So this is one of the, this is a little bit of information and background. So first of all, I want to talk about math. And for each of the areas, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the successes, some of the challenges, and next steps. Again, this is a district overview. I will tell you right now, if you're looking for schools in particular classrooms, each of the principals will come up, and each of the schools will present with their school improvement plans. And then we can get into specifics about each school. So every school is different. And to do this right now, we'd be here probably way too long. And I think it's more important that the principals will be able to talk about that, talk about it far more knowledgeable than I am about each of their own schools. So let's look at the math. Within the aggregate, grades three to 10, the student growth percentile is 57 percent, which, as I talked about, looking at the DART, when we say talking about comparable districts, look at the districts we can compare to, we are compared to, we are the highest growth percentile of those 10 districts. Then next, we'll talk about the number of students increased 3 percent last year, proficient and advanced. And that's a really good percentage. And we are the third highest percentage of increase in the 10 comparable districts. The percentage of students in the warning category, you know, that's the last category, has decreased slightly to 19 percent. And the achievement gap, as we talked about, the Composite Proficiency Index, that has 4.3 percent, which is a 3 percent improvement from 2007. These are small gains, but they are gains, small steps, but they are to be noted. Students scoring two or higher on a rubric in an open response increased by 2 percent, which is very good. And the two strands, these are some of the challenges, and this is some of the things we will address. We look at the strands of, in the curriculum, a number sense, data analysis, statistics, and probability. And when we look at those challenges, we're going to talk a little bit about next steps. First of all, is the implementation of the 2011 Massachusetts Frameworks, which is now aligned with the Common Core standards. We're meshing the two. We have new standards, we have new materials from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they've been worked on. We have committees working on these and how they will adjust our curriculum in Malden. Because as you know, you have Common Core standards, you have the Massachusetts Frameworks, and then you have your district curriculum. So this is how it all impacts one another. So one of the things is to look more at that, align our curriculum, make sure that we are aligned with all of the standards, because those are the standards that are addressed in the MCAS. And other things going on in mathematics, we have an intensive immersion experience for Malden teachers of mathematics. We have huge strides in professional development that will be going on with our teachers. It started last summer. We're looking into intensive content study for teachers of mathematics. We're looking to innovative programs. And the commitment is huge with teachers. We had successful professional development over the summer with over 30 teachers starting. We'll be putting on more this year. And it's deep content. We're looking at this, the grade span from K to 12 with high school teachers modeling. We have our math coaches, they're all involved in this. Our Director of Math and the teachers with strengthening the math knowledge. That's very, very important. Some of the highlights in English Language Arts. Our proficiency index increased from 210 to 211 in grade five in the aggregate, which is wonderful, 1.5 percent. It increased 6.6 percent for Limited English Proficient students, 5.5 increase for our former Limited English Proficient students, and a 5.1 increase for Special Education students, so grade five in the aggregate. Our highlights, again, the CPI increased from 2008 to 2011 in grade five in the aggregate, it increased 3.8 percent, 12.2 percent for Limited English Proficient students, and 13.4 percent for former Limited English Proficient students. And we see the gains going in some of the grades. This is district-wide. Other highlights, we see a percentage of students at the Advanced and the Proficient levels in grade six to 10. Most significant, we had a 7 percent increase in the Advanced and Proficient levels at grade seven. So we are above state levels on all open response and law composition at that grade level, so the greatest going on. Student growth percentile for grade, let's see what that grade was. Well, I'll go back to that.
Grade four.
Excuse me? For grade four, there, it's no, no, it's not out there, is 30 to indicating lower achievement. So this is a challenge for us. And there's little change in that index in grades three to four from 2008 to 2011. And the growth percentages for grades six and eight and 10 are 55 or less. So let's look to what we're going to do with our challenges. So most of the test items are district-wide, and most test items are below state average. So we have some work to do. And we'll find out on the next slide, some next steps. So in grade three to five, we have made a commitment to focus on writing open response questions throughout the year. This is part of the curriculum. And ensuring students are reading and writing every day, that's the most important thing for extended periods of time. And this is in our classes. We want our students reading and writing in all areas, not just English. They need to be doing it in science, they need to be doing it in history, they need to be doing it certainly enough, they do reading and writing as well. So this is important. Next steps for grades six to eight, a minimum of 90 minutes per week developing student writing skills, and explicit attention to the student's use of editing and revision strategies. And we find this information out by looking at the test items, looking at where we were deficient or where we were challenged. At grade six to 12, we're going to focus on comprehension and critical thinking strategies as a part of our daily expectations for reading and writing, getting students to think, think about what they're doing, critical thinking about what they're doing, and understanding what they're doing and why they're doing it, and developing students' ability to create and respond to questions related to office purpose and craft. And again, that comes directly from looking at some item analyses. We'll go on to Special Education now. As we noted, there is a decrease in Special Education student or learning disabilities. But there is an increase since our students identified with autism, emotional disabilities, and neurological impairments. And remember, everyone takes the MCAS. So at the next slide, let's look at some of the highlights. Well, the achievement was flat with some improvement in the student growth percentile, but well below the levels needed for the child left behind requirements for adequate yearly progress. Again, that's the difference of what the state says we should be doing and what we are doing with the CPI. And each achievement gap narrowed slightly in ELA and math. And that's a highlight. There's a slight increase in the number of students with disabilities who are proficient and advanced, which is great. And the percentage of warning and failures, however, has not decreased. In ELA, open response questions, we saw improvement. Reading and literature, we saw improvement. Math is still problematic, and we looked at some of the strands and some of the areas which were short answers, data analysis, statistics, probability, and number sequence. So what would be the next steps with Special Education? First of all, fidelity and adherence and adoption of the Common Core. This is something that we all will be doing, and especially looking at the integration of the Common Core into our curricula. Continued inclusion and professional development in content areas. So we're looking at intense math work, intense writing, intense vocabulary teaching, and increased vigilance to term and task. Fidelity to interventions. And an intervention is when we see something, we try to remedy it with a special program, such as Wilson Reading Programs. And if you have more questions on that, I'm sure either Dr. Adams or Mara Johnson can talk about that. And how we look at our service delivery models, an assessment will be going on. Now, we'll go to Limited English Proficient. Limited English Proficient, and these are some of the highlights for the MCAS. If you look at the formerly Limited English Proficient, and we look at the indexes and the CPIs, you can see some of the highlights going on. There's an increase in CPI in ELA in all grade levels for formerly Limited English Proficient. Look at it from 2008 to 2011, and you're seeing an increase. Look at the CPI for grade three, for example, 65.0. Look at the CPI for grade three in 2011, 80.6. See some dips. But grade five, there's an increase. Certainly, grade six, there's an increase, grade seven, and grade 10, grade three, I'm sorry, grade four, we'll be looking at that, too. That would be one of our challenges, to see what's happening there. Okay. And there's an increase in the proficiency index in all grades for our Limited English Proficient students when comparing them to 2008 to 2011. We look again, 46 to 58, 55 to 69.1, 50 to 64, 54.6 to 69. Those are certainly highlights. We're a very strong program. All our programs are strong. And I have to tell you, all our teachers work very, very hard to do their very best to get these CPIs and to get our students at higher levels on their MCAS. These are the challenges as we saw before. The CPI has remained flat in grades three and four, and in grade six, there's a slight decrease. So that is one of the challenges. Thank you. So next steps for Limited English Proficient students, K to eight teachers will complete one of the required Department of Elementary and Secondary Education ELL category trainings. I'll just remind you that the category trainings, there are four category trainings. And our Department of Education and Dr. Margaret Adams and the whole crew have really worked very, very hard. Our professional development this year is to get teachers trained in each of the areas of second language acquisition, content reading, testing students in London, and vocabulary development. They're intense trainings, they're prescribed by the Department of Education. We made a commitment last year to get all of our teachers trained. So on our PD days this year, our teachers are going to the trainings that they haven't accomplished. And this is important because every teacher in Malden is an ELL teacher, because every teacher has a student or students whose first language is not English, or, you know, who's Limited English Proficient. We have a development of vocabulary strategies, explicitly teaching vocabulary. And this is not just for ELL teachers, this is for every teacher in the district, every content area, how to be explicit using the strategies across the board. And one of the things I like to look at, too, is the consistency across the district. Everybody is getting the same professional development. And we have the implementation of an RTI model to identify areas of need for particular students and provide appropriate intervention. RTI stands for Response to Intervention. And some of the programs that come for students who need it, and Dr. Adams can actually amplify that a bit if you have any questions on that, target students' areas in English or in math. And it goes from formalized programs, progress monitoring, watching the dips, the highs, the lows, and monitoring the students so that we find that the exact, because not every student has the same issues, not every student in grade three, but we're going to target those students who need the appropriate interventions, the appropriate instruction, extra instruction even, to address their gaps. So this is a district overview, as I said. It's very general, and you understand a lot, but it's also giving you an idea of where the district is, some of the areas that we are looking for next steps, what we will be doing this year in general. Again, the schools, the individual schools will come and present, and we'll get more in-depth into what the school scores and school gaps and the achievement gaps in the different schools. So it's a lot, but I hope it was informative. And if you have any questions, other directors are here, we'd be happy to answer some of your questions.
Questions, Assistant Superintendent Casabian, the administrative team. Mr. O'Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Casabian. I agree that our faculty, staff, administration's working very hard. Kudos to the last two superintendents as well, implementing plans that take four or five years to come into play. I have a question on professional development. Over the last couple of years under Superintendent Smith, we brought a lot of our professional development back into the district, doing it our own. How effective have you seen that? Because you mentioned you're going to keep pushing in professional development, which for educators, that's constant anyways. But do you see that that was value-added with doing it in-house?
A lot of our professional development is job-embedded.
Okay.
And that's where your coaches come in. We have our math coaches. That's professional development. Every day, they're in classes. And they are modeling, they are coaching, and it's actually a more effective model. Our literacy coaches do the same thing, our special education coach does the same thing. Research says a job-embedded professional development is more effective than the one course after school. We also do very careful monitoring of what we do for professional development and how it is implemented into the classroom. So it's one thing to go to a workshop, but it's another thing to go in and see how it's implemented, and if it's implemented. And if, and they do their very best to be faithful to it. And the fidelity is important. Fidelity to curriculum. A curriculum evolves. So now you have a beautiful reading program, but now we have to still evolve around that and professional development on a new strategy that we know is research-based. All of our professional development is research-based. And there's two facets to PD. One is the instructional piece, the strategies. How do we get our content across to teachers? How do we make our students engaged? That's very big. The other piece is deepening teachers' content knowledge. And you can see that with the math. The math, we did a lot of professional development over the summer, thanks to some grants that we had. Most of them concentrated on the category trainings. We had Learn the Foundation Training, which is pre-AP, which is, again, students need equity and access. And if we just wait for a student to take an AP course to get those amazing strategies that will make them college-ready, it's not enough. We need to begin that professional development early on. And those strategies are huge. So child in sixth grade will get strong, advanced placement strategies. They deserve it.
But how do you, how would you do something like that if a child, say, comes from another country, and their first stop is the Malden Public School System? And they're six or seventh grade, age-wise? We still need to prepare those, we have an obligation to prepare those students.
Absolutely.
They have the right to receive college or vocation or whatever we can offer them in the high, getting to the high school. So is that all done through intervention, or?
I'm going to have Dr. Adams answer that. I think she's the expert. I could answer that, but I could, the expert needs to help you with that, too.
Thank you.
She's coming right behind you.
Most of our beginner ELLs will speak very little English. They're serviced through the structured English immersion programs at the Salemwood. And we've worked really hard in the last two to three years to raise expectations for children in those programs. For example, in social studies and science, they're using the same materials that the regular general education teachers are using. And what we're doing is modifying and scaffolding the material. So they're getting access to the same content. They even take the same midterms and finals, and we've played around with modifying that a bit to try to get really at their knowledge. So we've raised really expectations. In ESL, those students are also going through a new curriculum, a standard ESL curriculum. We're assessing them at the end of each unit. We're giving them benchmarks, and we're using that with the teachers to say, okay, the students didn't get this particular skill or didn't get this particular skill. So our goal in that program is to accelerate English language learning as quickly as possible. And so we've worked really hard with the teachers around that. We've given some professional development also on some key strategies that we'd like to see across the grade levels, across this grade span from K to A, so there's a connection between grade spans. Those students also have the same access to the same math curriculum, and we're trying to help adjust and scaffold their language learning so that all day long becomes language learning for them and accelerate it. So then they move into the regular general education curriculum and are receiving ESL support. So they're receiving support as long as they need to continue to have access to the regular curriculum through an ESL teacher. Does that answer that?
Yeah. So if I come- So if I come to, from another country right into Malden, and I'm, and of course, other countries might not be, depending on the country, they may be more advanced or behind. And I'm, say, thirteen years old, so I'm placed in a sixth or seventh grade, and we're expecting them to go to high school in two years on a ninth-grade curriculum.
We have a seamless kind of transition between the K to eights and the high school. So if you're an eighth grader and you still need ESL instruction, we have the levels at the high school. So we have an ESL one, an ESL two, an ESL three, and an ESL four. And that's only part of their day. So if you're in the highest level in ESL four, that's one course. You still get an ELA class, you're getting math, you're science, and you're social, you're getting your other content. So it's a class to kind of support you in continuing your language learning while you're taking general education classes. And many of those students, even in ESL two and three, some of them are in AP science and AP math courses. So they have access to that, and the guidance counselors do a great job of making sure that students have access to the, to the courses that they can access, and that meets their needs.
And do we follow that same protocol when we have a transient student, maybe a student from another district who might be age, might be eligible for sixth grade or seventh grade, but is testing, you give them the dibbles and all that when they come in, but testing on a first or second grade reading level? Because they, unfortunately, some of the children are, especially homeless children.
Right. Exactly. Exactly. That's where the interventions come in, strong interventions. Certainly, we do chronological, you know, the chronological versus the academic development of the student. And that's where interventions would come in, and that student would probably, would receive, you know, specialized, specialized reading, you know, to help student catch up and now that gap as well.
And the reason I ask these questions is I know a lot of the answers, but I just want to let the committee know, since I'm leaving in a few months, how important funding interventional specialists, these coaches for professional development, and what we spent in the last eight years that I've been on the committee, really does, does work, especially for the children in Malden, especially where we have a fifty-eight percent or so poverty rating, low-income rating, and high influx of transient students. So I just wanted to reaffirm that what you're asking for, especially during budget season for intervention specialists and stuff, is quite very important. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Altreino. Other questions? Saw a light on down in, Mr. Ola? Is that yours?
Right ahead. Just two quick ones. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Casabian. I want to echo what Mr. Altreino said. We do have a fantastic crop of teachers working very hard in the Malden public schools, and they're very lucky to have an advocate in you. In terms of the, for the next steps for the limited English proficiency, the completing the one-required DESE, ELL category training, is that our dedicated PD for the year? For all the PD days are dedicated towards getting our teachers to fulfill that requirement?
We have three full professional development days at the K to eight and at the high school. The high school is one area they're working on accreditation. And let's just talk about the K to eights right now. And yes, the three full professional development days are dedicated. I have to tell you, there is no category, you know, modern, I don't know what you want to call it now, but I know we're being looked at at the state as highly deliver services to our limited English proficient students. I know Malden does a huge, wonderful job at this. And we have done big strides in category trainings. Many of our teachers have completed all four trainings. It is essential to understand how a student acquires language. It's essential. And it's just a commitment to an urban district where the district with close to seventy home languages spoken. There are, it's an obligation that we need to provide to our teachers, certainly, it's an obligation to the students. So the three, this year, the commitment was made for the three professional development days.